Good evening, everyone. I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD School Board to order at 6:00 PM on February 6, 2025. The purpose of the pre-meeting is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting, which is scheduled for 7:00 PM tonight. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and I'm Randy Shackman. Next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. We have no one that signed up to participate Audience for Guests during the pre-meeting, so we will move right on to the next item. Dr. Eldridge, are there any reports by administration?
Yes, Mr. Blackburn has Item 5K L-M-N-O-N-P. So, Mr. Blackburn, tonight is your night. So, we're going to talk about our construction manager at risk, our athletic facilities, and some bond approvals, campus, multi-campus changeouts, and more Bond Round Two.
President Shackman, members of the boards, good to see everyone tonight. I'd like to refer you to some handouts that you should have in front of you. Before we get into the agenda items, I'm very happy to report that the new lighting at Standard Stadium is operational. It's ready to go. So, if you see a very bright spot driving down Valwood Parkway, you'll know why. Decided to see that. All right, for Item K, this is Phase One for Kent Rainwater and Creekview. As we have in past board meetings, we're taking a phased approach to try and start the work as quickly as we can for that renovation package. For Item L, this is the indoor practice field ventilation and the weight room equipment Item M is just the design for the track replacements and oversprays and the tennis court replacement and/or refinishing. We wanted to make sure we had the engineering in place before we got final numbers for the tennis courts and the tracks, so that's why that's just a partial for the design work. Item N is the 2018 bond-funded HVAC replacements that we discussed a couple of months ago. So, that's the pricing, and that's equipment only for Item N. And I apologize, but I did not catch till this afternoon that the right attachment was not included. So, if you look in your handouts, you'll see the backup for Item N. It says Item N at the top, and it should be in front of you there if you have questions about that. And then O, you do have the backup there. That is the construction management portion of the 2018 funded RTU replacements. And then Item P also was missing the backup, and it's in front of you as well, and that's at the top of this page. So, hopefully you all have that in front of you for your reference. I apologize for that not being attached correctly. It got lost somewhere between purchasing and the board agenda. And then finally, in front of you, just for some context, you have a summary of what we have priced to date from the 2018 extra projects that we were able to accomplish. So, just want to refer your attention to that. You can see we did have a couple of variances, as usual, a few over, a few under. I can speak to a couple of those. The indoor practice ventilation variance, when we initially did the estimate for that, we only estimated to replace what was actually broken, even though that equipment is 30 to 40 years old. And it might be working, but it's very old. And we felt like the better approach would be to replace the whole system together and keep it as a unit. We felt like we'd get a better value that way, so that's why there's that variance. As far as the weight rooms, the number that we carried initially for the estimate was the value of the equipment that we're replacing in the main buildings, which the main buildings have a room that's about a third the size of the rooms in the field houses. So, that's the reason for the number being changed for that line item. And then you can see at the bottom several items that we're not yet pricing until we get a little bit further along, and the current variance total over there at the bottom corner. So, any questions? Hopefully that helps a little bit. I know it was a lot.
Any questions, board?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the estimates were 2.640, and what you've, what we've authorized and what the variance is now 2.486. What about the remaining projects? Is there funding for that?
The 2.6, we're not pricing yet. So, we're going in order, we're going in the order that the board prioritized for us. We're trying to do that in order. Some of the pricing is coming in, some of the pricing is taking a little bit longer than some of the other things. So, what's before you tonight is what we've got pricing for so far. The 2.6 that's highlighted in the yellow is things that we are not pricing right now because we want to see how everything else shakes out.
But your current variance is almost at that number, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, does it mean that we won't have the money to do those other items?
That means we can, we may not be able to, depending on how some other things shake out. I do expect to save some money in a couple of things that are on this list that we haven't priced yet, so I'm hopeful we can still do those, but we'll have to see how the pricing comes in.
Board members, any other questions?
Mr. Blackburn, thank you very much. Dr. Eldridge, is that?
That concludes the administrative reports.
Board, is there any question or discussion relative to the consent agenda? Okay, then I think we've reached the end of our agenda, and we will call this pre-meeting session closed at 6:07 PM.
All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see such an engaged and active crowd here. Wish you were here every Monday, the first Monday of the month for our regular board meetings. We look forward to our board meeting tonight. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM. And I would invite everyone to join me in standing as Elizabeth Villafranca from Mary Immaculate Catholic Church provides us with an opening message, followed by the pledges led by Carolyn Benavides to the U.S. flag and Kim Brady to the Texas flag.
Bow your heads, please. Gracious and loving God, we come before you today as a community seeking your wisdom and strength. As the leaders of the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District face difficult decisions, especially the possibility of school closures, we ask for your guidance. Grant them clarity of mind, compassion of heart, and steadfast courage. May every choice be made with fairness, wisdom, and a deep concern for the well-being of our students, teachers, and families. Let this board be a beacon of unity, working toward the good of all. In these uncertain times, may we trust in your providence and lean on one another with understanding and grace. Bless this meeting, bless our students, bless our parents, bless our administrators, and bless our school board, Lord, and may your peace dwell among us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. One state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. As the district, we dedicate all of our efforts, all of our resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, all decisions, and all actions. You will see those deliberations, decisions, and actions tonight in open session. The exception would be if we had some closed session, which we do not tonight on the agenda, and that is normally from Section 551 of the Texas Government Code. The record should show that all board members are present. Tara Herbocic, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and I'm Randy Shackman. So we are all here. We constitute a quorum, and we may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments during Audience for Guests. Persons wishing to speak for Audience for Guests have completed an online form for this purpose and submitted it electronically prior to today's 5:00 PM deadline. And when the board reaches Agenda Item 4, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to be able to speak. Our next item on the agenda is Special Presentations and Recognitions, and generally, recognitions. We're going to turn that over to Karen Rodriguez.
Good evening. Before I start, I needed to say that Emily Riley left her lights on. So if Emily Riley is here. Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and Board of Trustees. My name is Karen Rodriguez, and I am proud to present our CFB Champion of the Month. Through our partnership with Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, we honor individuals who demonstrate excellence with the CFB Champion Award. The February CFB Champion Award is being presented to Melissa Clark, a 4th grade math ESL teacher at Farmers Branch Elementary School. Ms. Clark is being awarded tonight for saving the life of a 5th grade student. So just moments after finishing breakfast at school, 5th grader Benjamin Roper found himself in a life-threatening situation. As he was walking down the hall to class, he began choking on a biscuit. Ms. Clark was nearby, quickly recognized the urgency, and jumped into action, performing the Heimlich maneuver on Benjamin twice, saving his life. Benjamin's mother, Ms. Roper, expressed her sincere gratitude to Mrs. Clark for saving her son's life. She said, "We are incredibly grateful for her quick thinking and decisive actions during this frightening moment. Ms. Clark has been a beloved member of Farmers Branch Elementary for many years, and her impact extends beyond my son. My sisters and I, now in our 30s, still fondly remember her from our own time at the school." Ms. Clark, we thank you for your heroic actions and the unwavering dedication you have for your students. It is an honor to present you with the CFB Champion Award tonight. That concludes tonight's recognitions.
The next item on our agenda will be committee updates. And so we'll start with our committee. Board members, are there any committee updates?
Yes, sir, I have two. First is the Finance and Facilities Committee, which comprises of myself, Eliana Garza Rojas, and Marjorie Barnes. We met with Ms. Settle and Mr. Marsh, and we discussed more efficient use of personnel, minimum class sizes K through 12, daily schedules of students and teachers, and TEA policies. And then my second one is the Bond Oversight Committee. We met, Ms. Herbocic is also on that committee with me. We talked about special education improvements at Freeman, Landry, Ranchview, and Riverchase, and how we are actively getting those done fast and furiously this summer also. Ranchview Robotics Arena and Competition Space to be completed by this August. Plans for the Outdoor Learning Center and Ag Sciences were reviewed and to begin this December. It was very exciting, but we are waiting on FEMA to get that, all of that plan started. And the Facilities Planning Advisory Group criteria was shared with us.
I'm going to report on the activities of the Governance Subcommittee, and that's myself, Mrs. Hatfield, and Ms. Barnes. We met on February 2nd. We reviewed the final legal comments on policies and board operating procedures and made necessary updates. I will distribute the draft of our operating procedures for your review. At our discussion, we ultimately felt the updates were significant enough that you should all have more time to review those, thus the policies and the operating procedures have been pushed to the March meeting. We also completed our Subcommittee work on Strategic Priority 2 as part of the ongoing work in reviewing and refining our CV 2030. I'll get that also out for your review, along with the Strategic Priority 3 and 4, which are the next items, if you remember from the previous schedule, that we'll review together as a board to determine next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Herbocic. Ms. Benavides?
Thank you, Mr. Shackman. I'm reporting on behalf of Shack. We are considering backpack weight concerns, as well as weather guidelines for when the children, rules surrounding when students may have access to outdoor play.
Great, thank you. Other board members, Ms. Garza Rosas?
We don't have a meeting that, I'm speaking on behalf of the Legislative Committee, which is Carolyn Benavides, Randy Shackman, and myself. We do not have a meeting, but we do have an update that on February 11th, Matthew Hall will be coming to Team CFB to have listening circles to work with our advocacy crew. The intended plan is the hope that the board will come together and go to the state Capitol on April 1st. However, since you guys are all sitting here and in the public, I would also ask that you advocate for our kids as well at a state level and not just at a local level. It is extremely important for us to do so. We have priorities as a school board, and you guys are welcome to go to our website and find those. We've worked together collaboratively.
All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see such an engaged and active crowd here. Wish you were here every Monday, the first Monday of the month for our regular board meetings. We look forward to our board meeting tonight. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM, and I would invite everyone to join me in standing as Elizabeth Viafranca from Mary Immaculate Catholic Church provides us with an opening message, followed by the pledges led by Carolyn Benavides to the U.S. flag and Kim Brady to the Texas flag.
Bow your heads, please. Gracious and loving God, we come before you today as a community seeking your wisdom and strength. As the leaders of the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District face difficult decisions, especially the possibility of school closures, we ask for your guidance. Grant them clarity of mind, compassion of heart, and steadfast courage. May every choice be made with fairness, wisdom, and a deep concern for the well-being of our students, teachers, and families. Let this board be a beacon of unity, working toward the good of all. In these uncertain times, may we trust in your providence and lean on one another with understanding and grace. Bless this meeting, bless our students, bless our parents, bless our administrators, and bless our school board, Lord, and may your peace dwell among us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts, all of our resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, all decisions, and all actions. You will see those deliberations, decisions, and actions tonight in open session. The exception would be if we had some closed session, which we do not tonight on the agenda, and that is normally from Section 551 in the Texas Government Code. The record should show that all board members are present. Tara Herbaczek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and I'm Randy Shackman. So we are all here. We constitute a quorum, and we may conduct business on behalf of the district. Before moving to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments during Audience for Guests. Persons wishing to speak for Audience for Guests have completed an online form for this purpose and submitted it electronically prior to today's 5:00 PM deadline. And when the board reaches Agenda Item 4, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to be able to speak. Our next item on the agenda is Special Presentations and Recognitions, and generally recognitions. We're going to turn that over to Karen Rodriguez.
Good evening. Before I start, I needed to say that Emily Riley left her lights on. So if Emily Riley is here. Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and Board of Trustees. My name is Karen Rodriguez, and I am proud to present our CFB Champion of the Month. Through our partnership with Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, we honor individuals who demonstrate excellence with the CFB Champion Award. The February CFB Champion Award is being presented to Melissa Clark, a 4th grade math ESL teacher at Farmers Branch Elementary School. Ms. Clark is being awarded tonight for saving the life of a 5th grade student. So just moments after finishing breakfast at school, 5th grader Benjamin Roper found himself in a life-threatening situation. As he was walking down the hall to class, he began choking on a biscuit. Ms. Clark was nearby, quickly recognized the urgency, and jumped into action, performing the Heimlich maneuver on Benjamin twice, saving his life. Benjamin's mother, Benjamin's mother, Ms. Roper, expressed her sincere gratitude to Mrs. Clark for saving her son's life. She said, "We are incredibly grateful for her quick thinking and decisive actions during this frightening moment. Ms. Clark has been a beloved member of Farmers Branch Elementary for many years, and her impact extends beyond my son. My sisters and I, now in our 30s, still fondly remember her from our own time at the school." Ms. Clark, we thank you for your heroic actions and the unwavering dedication you have for your students. It is an honor to present you with the CFB Champion Award tonight. That concludes tonight's recognitions.
The next item on our agenda will be committee updates, and so we'll start with our Board members, are there any committee updates?
Yes, sir, I have two. First is the Finance and Facilities Committee, which comprises of myself, Eliana Garza Rojas, and Marjorie Barnes. We met with Ms. Settle and Mr. Marsh, and we discussed more efficient use of personnel, minimum class sizes K through 12, daily schedules of students and teachers, and TEA policies. And then my second one is the Bond Oversight Committee. We met, Ms. Herbaczek is also on that committee with me. We talked about special education improvements at Freeman, Landry, Ranchview, and Riverchase, and how we are actively getting those done fast and furiously this summer also. Ranchview Robotics Arena and Competition Space to be completed by this August. Plans for the Outdoor Learning Center and Ag Sciences were reviewed and to begin this December. It was very exciting, but we are waiting on FEMA to get that, all of that plan started. And the Facilities Planning Advisory Group criteria was shared with us.
I'm going to report on the activities of the Governance Subcommittee, and that's myself, Mrs. Hatfield, and Ms. Barnes. We met on February 2nd. We reviewed the final legal comments on policies and board operating procedures and made necessary updates. I will distribute the draft of our operating procedures for your review. At our discussion, we ultimately felt the updates were significant enough that you should all have more time to review those, thus the policies and the operating procedures have been pushed to the March meeting. We also completed our Subcommittee work on Strategic Priority 2 as part of the ongoing work in reviewing and refining our CV 2030. I'll get that also out for your review, along with the Strategic Priority 3 and 4, which are the next items, if you remember from the previous schedule, that we'll review together as a board to determine next steps. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Herbaczek. Ms. Benavides?
Thank you, Mr. Shackman. I'm reporting on behalf of Shack. We are considering backpack weight concerns as well as weather guidelines for when the children, rules surrounding when students may have access to outdoor play.
Great, thank you. Other Board members, Ms. Garza Rosas?
We don't have a meeting that, I'm speaking on behalf of the Legislative Committee, which is Carolyn Benavides, Randy Shackman, and myself. We do not have a meeting, but we do have an update that on February 11th, Matthew Hall will be coming to Team CFB to have listening circles to work with our advocacy crew. The intended plan is the hope that the board will come together and go to the state capitol on April 1st. However, since you guys are all sitting here and in the public, I would also ask that you advocate for our kids as well at a state level and not just at a local level. It is extremely important for us to do so. We have priorities as a school board, and you guys are welcome to go to our website and find those. We've worked together collaboratively to get this done, so just, it's extremely imperative that we do that for our kids.
Any other reports? We have an active, working, great bunch of board members. And Ms. Garza Rojas and the work that the advocacy group is doing, good stuff, and we need, as she said, all of you to get involved with us. We look forward to that. The next item on our agenda is District Announcements, and I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Eldridge.
Okay, several things, great things that have happened in our district. Principal Nicole Greenleaf hosted Rainwater's 30th year anniversary at the campus. It was so well-attended. There's so much tradition, so many great teachers and administrators, great view of all the T-shirts, most of the board attended. It was incredible, the choir performance and a lively dance club. I mean, it was just so many amazing traditions that happened at that anniversary. Also, wanted to thank our principal, Kara Miller, at Ranchview High School. She partnered with Undefeated Learning and Caterpillar Foundation, and they provided our school district with a manufacturer breakout box, and it was an immersive learning experience that was, we are the first in the nation to get our kids to practice that manufacturing. They were actually practicing manufacturing sunglasses. It was incredible, and that's truly an authentic learning experience for them. So what a great thing. And it was also featured on Fox 4 News, so Clarice Tinsley did a little blip about it. We also have to thank Carla Hardaway at Creekview. Several of us attended the Fork Lorico Competition at the AT&amp;T Performance Center. It was incredible to watch our kids. She's been a part of that organization. It's her fourth year in doing so. Our kids, I think it was field finished first in their middle school duet. It was incredible to watch our kids dance, and so what a great energy and lots of competition across the metroplex. So good things are happening. That's all I have.
There we go. And now we would like to get an update from PTA, and I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Allo.
Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and the esteemed board, I am Deanna Nunez. I am the second VP of Council under membership. Let's start tonight with our PTA model to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. It is election season, and our nominating committee is looking for you. We have a Google Intros form available for job descriptions on our Council PTA website. You can fill out and find out the jobs that are available. Our spring training extravaganza will be at the Nancy Watten Center on February 22nd from 9:00 to 12:00. Babysitting will be available, and anyone in the community is welcome to attend. It's a great way to learn about the roles of PTA if anyone is interested in becoming more involved in your local PTAs. Please fill out a Google form on our website to RSVP. We do have a big community program this year, Patrol Stories, is coming soon. It is promoted for student safety by fostering a positive community relationship with our first responders. It will be a K through 8 event on March 1st at Newman Smith. The showtime is at 1:00 PM, and ticket information is coming soon. This month, we are recognizing all of our Golden Apple schools. We want to honor those principals who have supported PTA by getting their staff to join. Golden Apple is received only when you have 100% of your staff members as PTA members. Principals, when we call your name, you're going to come and receive a banner. This year is a banner with a golden apple. Hopefully, we'll get all schools with a banner. Next year, you'll get an apple sticker for that year to continue. So our first school is Rainwater Elementary, Blair Elementary, Country Place Elementary, Kent Elementary, Farmers Branch Elementary, Thompson Elementary, La Valita Elementary, McLaughlin Strickland Elementary, Rosemead Elementary, Blalack Middle School, DeWitt Perry Middle School, Polk Middle School, and Newman Smith High School. Thank you, principals, for your support of PTA. As always, thank you, community, for supporting PTA. Okay, you guys can turn around now, too. One more bigger. All right.
So an excellent example that shows how much our campus administration believes in the power of PTA, and we are grateful for all the work that PTA does. And if you are interested in becoming a member of PTA, we encourage you to do that. The next item that's up on our agenda is number three, our non-action items. And first on the list is our annual report and HB3 Goals, the TAPER report. Ms. Keane?
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share the CFB ISD Annual Report information on student performance in our district for the 2023-24 school year. Please know that the data we will be reviewing tonight was released by the Texas Education Agency on December 15th. And while the information on STAR testing is from the 23-24 school year, our financial rating, graduation rate, and the college career and military readiness factors are from the 2021-22 school year. So I'll refer to that as a lagging indicator. Texas Education Code requires the Board of Trustees to publish an annual district performance report and hold a public hearing on information provided within the Texas Academic Performance Report, or also known as TAPER. This year, Carrollton Farmers Branch held our public hearing earlier tonight prior to the board meeting. Tonight, we will share the information with the board and those in attendance. All information related to the 2023-2024 TAPER, which is an overview, will also include an overview of our financial integrity rating system, the district accreditation status, how to access the campus performance objectives, also a report on campus incidents, and a look at the House Bill 3 goals, which are reflected in the TAPER. Additionally, I'll provide an update to the state's accountability rating process. As a reminder to those in attendance, the mission of CFB ISD as a diverse community of global learners is to empower scholars to acquire lifelong knowledge, skills, and values that prepare them to compete in the world marketplace while contributing to their community. We have high expectations for all students. As we look at our student performance data tonight, this is a good reminder that we know that our students are valued and are more than just the assessment numbers that you'll find on the public state sites. As we preview the 2023-24 TAPER, please know that this data is reflected from our PMS submissions and student assessment data. This report is compiled and distributed by TEA, and the published TAPER PDF, which will be located on our district website, includes a wide range of student information regarding our performance, which is also disaggregated into student subpopulations, and it provides extensive information on staff and our programs. This is a great way to see our data compared to the region and at the state level, all within that report. Typically, each school year, districts are assigned a district rating that is calculated by the culmination of all of their campus ratings. They're also provided a special education determination status. This slide shows a picture of the first page of the TAPER. Now, the once again anticipated ratings have not been released due to, one, the initial lawsuit between other school districts and TEA around the timeliness of releasing the final 2023 Accountability Manual, and now, an additional lawsuit between other school districts and TEA regarding questions of assessment validity for the 2024 Accountability Ratings. So these lawsuits have resulted in a delay of our annual campus and district ratings. However, TEA was able to release our special education determination status through results-driven accountability, or what we call RDA, and CFB ISD received our status of meets requirement for the 23-24 school year, and we're continuing to make improvements in our processes and supports for our students each year. CFB ISD has earned the highest rating of Superior Achievement, which is a rating of an A, and a numerical score of a 100 on the Texas FIRST, which that's the acronym for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, for the 23-24 school year. We have received the highest rating every year since the system's inception. This is another rating that is required in the annual report. The first rating, which the Texas Education Agency issued to public schools and has issued since 1999, measures the quality of school districts' financial management and reporting. The report ensures that Texas public schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices and that they improve those practices. The system is designed to encourage Texas public schools to better manage their financial resources to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. The rating is based on 20 indicators that include results of the annual external audit, debt management, fund balance, and administrative cost ratio, among other financial indicators. The recent designation is based on financial information from the 22-23 fiscal year. Before we begin looking at our academic performance, let's look first at the profile of our district, and then the students and staff in CFB from last year. Our district serves students from age 3 to 21 across 35 campuses and three education centers. In 2023 and 24, we enrolled over 24,000 students and employed nearly 3,700 personnel, of which 67% were professional staff. Our average teacher salary, which is $63,945 in CFB, is almost $1,500 above the state's average. As you're well aware, this helps keep CFB competitive in regards to recruiting and retention of other teachers in our area. TAPER also provides a view of our staff profile. Our full-time teachers accounted for 51.4% of our full-time staff last year. Looking at the pie chart, the majority of our teachers had over five years of classroom experience. Of the 1,893 teachers, 45.4% of our teaching staff had zero to five years of teaching experience. That's about 10% higher than the state for this past school year. Remembering that these are our students from last year, you can see that our CFB student population profile is listed here. Our CFB student population has remained relatively unchanged over the last five years. The district saw the largest increase in our Hispanic population, and so that is just information for us to know. Regarding student enrollment by program type, we saw a slight decrease in our economically disadvantaged students from 66.5% in 2023 to 65.9% in 2024. Again, all of this information is reflected in the TAPER. Our special services population is also continuing to rise. As we see here, it went from 15.4% to 17.1%, which is another increase over the year previous to that, so in 2022. Emergent bilingual, our third program type, has experienced significant growth in our district. We see an increase from 38.8% up to 42.7% last year. You can see the increase in our gifted and talented numbers as well, by almost a full percent from 11.3% to 12.2% in this past school year. This positive increase is attributed to our enhancements and adjustments to our identification processes and additional screening tools used last year. Due to the stall in the release of our ratings for 2023 and 2024, the district accreditation statuses for the 23-24 school year have not been issued. So each district's annual report must instead include the 2022-23 accreditation status, which was a B, meaning that we are an accredited school district. Our campus performance objectives, which is another piece that is required within the annual report, they can be found in our campus improvement plans. So if you go to our district website and our campus websites, you'll be able to find those specific campus improvement plans, which house our campus performance objectives. We initially shared the locally calculated accountability subset scores from 2024 during the September school board meeting. As released in TAPER, we see the confirmation of those accountability subset data. For those results included all students testing during the spring administration of STAR 3 through 8 tests, as well as the end-of-course exams. The scores shown here from the recently released TAPER include all versions of STAR testing, so that's grades 3 through 8 and EOC, including those who tested during the summer and the December of 2023, as well as our STAR alternate scores. Additionally, these scores only include students who were enrolled in CFB on snapshot date, which was that last Friday in October of 2023. TAPER does include two consecutive years of STAR data, and so for comparison purposes, we've included those here. Looking at all subjects combined for approaches grade level and above, 74% of students were at or above the passing standards. Gains have been made in comparison to 2023, most notably the all subjects for, in the all subjects area, as well as in reading and in social studies. And that is at the meets grade level or above, as well as gains in our master's performance level, and again, for the all subjects for reading and for social studies. Here's an additional view of that exact same data, which shows more years to consider and to see how we performed compared to pre-COVID and pre-STAR redesign. And so what you see here is 2019, and then you see that bar representing COVID, so there are no data points available because we did not test that spring. And then it moved into the 2021 school year. We had testing again in 2022. Then the STAR redesign occurred, so across all assessments that were given, the tests looked slightly different with new question types, including writing samples, drag-and-drop, and multi-select type questions. And so we can see that our meets grade level percentage is above where we were in 2019, while our masters and approaches grade level and above is nearly there. We previously shared all of these next slides at our board meeting in September. TAPER does confirm the accountability subset data, and so I'll briefly go through these with you all again. Again, the purpose of the annual report is to provide information from the TAPER, and so that's what we are doing here. You'll see that the state and region percentage for each grade level in elementary mathematics in addition to the district performance across 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. Here, we revisit the elementary reading percentage for each grade level. These are percentages for approaches grade level and above and are reflected in our district TAPER. Here's our middle school mathematics slides. Again, we'd like to remind the board and our audience that middle school mathematics is an area that we see off-grade level testing, where we have our advanced 7th grade math students taking the 8th grade math assessment, and the advanced 8th grade mathematics students taking the algebra end-of-course or EOC exams. Here's a view of our middle school reading scores. And again, like I mentioned, we've previously shared these scores in September, but what we are including here we are including here is just the confirmation of what we see in the TAPER. Here's a look at our fifth, eighth, and our biology EOC. These are the only three grade levels that are tested in the area of science, and so CFP was above the state and region in fifth grade science, just below the state in eighth grade science, and we were equivalent to the state and region in biology. As we wrap up our review of the student achievement performance, we see our EOC-tested courses, which include algebra, English I and English II. The state, region, and district are trending similarly in student performance in algebra and English I. And if the board or community was interested in looking into campus-level data, please know that each campus has their own TAPER report available on the TEA website, as well as your campus websites here in CFP. And then here is just a quick view, looking at the last two EOCs, which are U.S. history and biology. Another requirement of the district's annual report is showing our progress towards our House Bill III board goals. Again, this information was shared at the September board meeting, and the graph here shows a green line, which indicates the 60-by-30, which is the initiative of TEA to hit 60% of third-grade students at the meets grade level or above performance indicator. So you can see here that we surpassed the House Bill III board goal with 51% of our third-grade students earning a meets grade level or above on STAR. Here is another view. I've again provided that green line to indicate the 60-by-30, which means by 2030, we will have 60% of our third graders, third-grade mathematics students at meets grade level or above. We had a 4% goal increase from 2023 to 2024, and we were able to meet that goal of 49%, which puts us on track with our House Bill III board goal for our third-grade students. We had a rigorous goal here, and we met it. Here you'll see that our class of 2023, which shows the 61%, is reflected in TAPER. These are one of our lagging indicators that we'll look at, that are found within TAPER, and this is one of those. So 61% is a 1% increase from the class of 2022, and this is included in the 2024 accountability. Again, that's on hold. But then, based on our preliminary indicators, the class of 2024 has a projected overall CCMR percentage of around 86%. You'll see that I added a blue line here, which highlights TEA's score of 88%, which would scale our district to an A in CCMR for accountability ratings. We have surpassed that 60% goal of TEA's 60-by-30, and we are maintaining a rigorous goal as we continue to strive for that A rating in CCMR. This class of 2024 data, so students who graduated this past spring, will not be seen until the 2025 accountability rating, if, when, and if those do come out. But now for a more expanded look at college career and military readiness found within TAPER. CCMR includes more than college-ready factors, which does include test scores on TSI, Accuplacer, SAT, or ACT. So again, remembering we're looking at the class of 2023 here. We'll see the coursework taken by graduating seniors while they are enrolled in high schools, such as dual credit, advanced placement, on-ramps, and college prep, as well as industry-based certifications or through CTE classes. A noted change this year within TAPER is that they did move the calculation of our students who received what's called a sped advanced diploma under college-ready. It was previously listed under career and military readiness, and so as a result, this is the first year where the data has been moved, and so we aren't able to compare the percentages to last year because they made that change. It changes our overall percentage of that 50.5% that are deemed college-ready that's found within the TAPER. Here, we'll turn our attention to graduation rates. Again, another lagging indicator, as this is the class of 2023. You can see here the 10-year trend line. CFP continues to have a four-year graduation rate above 90%. The four-year grad rate for the class of 2023 in CFP was 94.1%, which is above the state average, which was 90.3, and the region, which was 88.5% for the class of 2023. So this is a moment of celebration, as it is a significant increase over the previous two years, and the work of our campus counselors and teachers, the grad team efforts, and the administrators is clear and evident here, as we want to ensure that as many of our students graduate from Carrollton Farmers Branch their senior year. Safety is a top priority in CFP. Last year, the number of mandatory expulsions in our district accounted for an overall incident rate of less than 1%. And so we can remember that through our Department of Safety and Security, all campuses were equipped with a secured safe entrance that includes a video bell intercom system. Additionally, our security directors have worked to increase the required staff at all campuses across the district and train personnel on safety systems through Raptor alerts. Thank you. Texas Education Code 51.403E requires post-secondary institutions in Texas to report student performance during the first year of enrollment after high school graduation to the high school from which the students graduated. And then districts must include this information in their annual report. And so the Texas Higher Education College Board publishes a report listing this information for each of our high schools in Texas. They are sorted by county and district, and it's available on the website. So if you need any easy reading over the weekend, you can find that there. This first page does explain, the first page within that report does explain the purpose of the report and some very in-depth data calculation methods. So again, that easy reading would be great for the weekend. So these last two slides are just the data that has come from the Texas Higher Education Board to let us know the percentage of our students and the count of our students who have gone on to college. This report does include the GPA earned during that first year in post-secondary education if they're enrolled in a public higher education campus in Texas. So our key takeaways tonight include these four points. Our ratings are on hold for 2023 still, and now 2024. We did receive that superior financial rating. It's the highest rating reflecting fiscal responsibility. Our academic performance, there are areas of increase, and we are excited about that. We're thankful to our teachers, who work so hard with our students to make that happen. And then our graduation rate, it's increased from the previous years, and that is no small task. And so I've said this before each time I present, but I don't ever want to miss an opportunity to extend a much deserved thank you to the work of our many, many teachers, our staff, our campus administrators, for just the level of intentionality that we see in our students' education. We have a big push for knowing our students by name and need, and they make that evident so that we can have an incredible community of learners. And so thank you to the families who ensure that our students are at school and that they're there for learning. It has an incredibly important impact on who they're going to become to our community in the future. This does conclude our presentation on the student performance and the required components of the annual report and TAPER. As a reminder, we did hold our public hearing earlier tonight, and you will be able to access this report in the coming weeks on our district's website. Thank you for your time this evening. Are there any questions that I can answer at this time?
Thank you, Ms. Keen. We appreciate your report. The annual TAPER shows us some great things are happening in CFP. Still got work to do, but we have superior staff and resources that are making the high expectations for our students a reality. Thank you. Board members, are there any questions? Ms. Herbaczek?
Thank you. So a question on the post-secondary performance data and information. Y'all know I have an interest in this. So this is just GPA for first year following graduation. Does this continue to track a second year, third year, or does it stop after the first year at public universities?
I understand it's public universities. The report that is provided is just that first year following. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. You did a wonderful job, as always. I was looking at the college career and military readiness slide. When students are indicated as college-ready under dual credit and AP, is that a certain number of classes that they have to pass or receive a certain rating on? Or is it that they take a class?
For example, under dual credit, they've received credit for that course.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the presentation as well. I just have for clarification for the community, what is a TAPER report, and who does it go to?
Oh, absolutely. A TAPER report is a great read. Every single school district across the state of Texas has a report where it provides you a lot of information regarding your school profile. So you can look at it from a district level to see overall how the district is performing, and then you can see it at every single campus. So you can look at information regarding class size. You can look at how many teachers are brand-new, how many teachers are veteran. You can look at salary averages. You can look at just a lot of disaggregated information. It'll have a breakdown of grade level performance in terms of percentages, which is why we made sure to include those here tonight. It holds a lot of information, and you can look up any campus across the whole state of Texas. So if you have a family member down in Houston, and you're just very curious on a Saturday night, you can pull up their TAPER report and just check in on how that school is performing.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Any other board members? Ms. Keen, thank you again. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, I suspect, is one that has brought most of us here. It is the facilities master plan update, and we're going to start with some information from Dr. Eldridge.
Tonight's facility master plan agenda item has been a 15-month-long, methodical, and challenging process for all of us involved. As your superintendent, I would like to reassure you that this process has involved data collection, feedback, onsite facility walks, conversations, and community input. This has been an open process for all of us. It's been transparent, and it's been very inclusive. There is no way around the difficult conversation that we have to have tonight. But the real conversation that we're facing is that for the last two years, in 2023 and 2024, we have adopted deficit budgets. 24 of our 34 schools are only utilized at 75% capacity or less. Some of our buildings are outdated, and they do not foster the safe and dynamic learning spaces that we need today and in the future. This painstaking work has led to the criteria that was developed for tonight. The criteria was created by our facility planning advisory group, and they help guide us. Even with the guidance and the data that's been provided, it does not account for all of the emotion and memories that have been made at all of your campuses. Before we present, I would like to play a video that we shared with our facility planning advisory group that summarizes the state of our schools, not just in our school district, but across the state. And after the video plays, Mr. Blackburn will present his presentation. So watch the video.
Talking to you about more North Texas schools may be forced to close their doors. Today, we know that Plano ISD could announce plans to shut down several school campuses, and it all comes after Richardson ISD moving to close five different school campuses earlier this year.
Declining enrollments, tighter budgets, forcing some difficult decisions.
Take, for example, Carrington Middle School. It's one of five Plano ISD schools operating at half-capacity.
If you're trying to operate too many schools, you're taking resources out of your remaining schools to prop up these half-empty beds, and often that leaves their amount of resources.
OSFISD is facing a $4.5 million budget deficit. If we do not make some fundamental changes, then what we will see is that deficit will grow.
If the board approves these recommendations, students at several schools will be reselling.
You're not going to make everybody happy. I believe we're searching for a perfect answer, where there is no perfect answer.
Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, esteemed members of the board, it's good to see you tonight. Tonight, I'll be presenting the facilities planning recommendations for the board to As we begin, I want to say that discussions like this are never easy. When I first became acquainted with CFP over 20 years ago, it was evident that there was a strong sense of family here. Since I came on board, I have come to believe that the sense of family here is even stronger now. As every family knows, sometimes hard conversations are needed, and this is one of those times. That said, I firmly believe that our family will come out stronger on the other side. How did we get here? After adopting a deficit budget in August of 2023, we recognized the need to take a close look at things, including commissioning a capacity study and a facilities master plan. The last thing we wanted to do was to spend money as planned prior to the deficit budget, and then realize afterwards, we should have made a few course corrections. The capacity study and facilities master plan were presented to the board in June of 2024, and included recommendations for consolidation of three elementaries and one middle school. The board requested input from the community before taking any action. We wanted our community, staff, and board to have the best information possible so that they could make the best decisions. Our demographic information was not up to date, so we commissioned a demographic study using fall 2024 snapshot data. A second consecutive deficit budget was adopted in August of 2024, reinforcing the need for change. And the facility planning advisory group met three times in the fall of 2024, and the fall 2024 demographics report was presented at the December 2024 board meeting. Our guiding principles throughout have been and continue to be student achievement, teacher support, and fiscal responsibility. The capacity study, completed at the end of last year using 2023-2024 data, documented a large number of empty seats across the district. Two points I want to make regarding capacity utilization. Low campus utilization does not mean that a particular campus will be recommended for consolidation. The goal is to improve utilization across the district. And more students per school does not mean more students per class. It does mean we can better afford the staff, space, and resources needed for optimal student You might ask, why is having extra capacity an issue? In a word, it's expensive. The two schools here are both less than 25 years old, built only six years apart, and have similar floor plans. We spend 30% more per student on the campus with lower utilization. Our goal is to maximize our investment for every student. To do that, we need to address this kind of imbalance. Here are the recommendations presented to the board in June of 2024 being considered now. Consolidate three elementary schools, add one new pre-K, and consolidate one middle Just to recap, the charter of the facility planning advisory group was clear. Setting criteria for CFP to make mat- Setting criteria for CFB to make master planning criteria, to make master planning recommendations to the board. And the goal was for CFB to be among the most competitive districts via efficient use of district funds and facilities. As we shared with the facility planning advisory committee, thanks to conservative fiscal management by the trustees and our staff, we currently have a healthy fund balance. If we do not act now, that will change quickly. This slide shows what will happen with no raises and no changes. It would not be long before the fund balance is gone. Here you can see the results. Criteria developed in four categories. Condition inadequacy, cost for quality, location, and utilization were all approved by over 90%. At the same time that the facility planning advisory committee was doing their work, our demographer, PASA, was analyzing our current demographic data. Their report was presented to the board in December of 2024. There are a couple of things we want to highlight from PASA's report. Looking back five years, we can see that while our enrollment has declined, most of our immediate neighbors are seeing steeper declines. Looking forward for the next 10 years, we can see that PASA is projecting a continued decline of roughly 1,000 students. Declining enrollment, of course, means declining revenue. The last thing to highlight from the demographics report is areas where student numbers are expected to increase. As you can see, most of the growth is projected to occur west of I-35. Now, we would like to briefly look at where things stand right now regarding existing utilization and adequacy. This shows the elementary schools in the Creekview feeder. The blue circles depict a one-mile radius from a campus. In other words, half of our transportation radius. As you can see, there is an area in this feeder pattern where you are less than one mile from five of our current elementary campuses. Overall utilization is currently 71% for elementaries in this feeder pattern. This shows elementaries in the Smith feeder. Again, the blue circles depict a one-mile radius from a campus. In other words, half of our transportation radius. This feeder pattern has an area where you are less than one mile from four of our current elementary campuses. And overall utilization is currently 77% for elementaries in this feeder pattern. For the Turner feeder, it's the same song but a different verse. This feeder pattern has a large area where you are less than one mile from four of our current elementary campuses. Overall utilization is 65% for elementaries in this feeder pattern. This shows elementaries in the Ranchview feeder. Again, the blue circles depict a one-mile radius. This feeder has the least overlap of them all, and overall utilization is currently 75% for this feeder pattern. This shows middle schools district-wide. Red circles depict the two-mile radius from a campus. Middle schools have an area where you are less than two miles from four of our current campuses. Overall utilization is 67% for middle schools. Now that we have discussed how we got here and gotten some context about the existing landscape, it is time to look at the specific recommendations. The reasons for these recommendations are fiscal responsibility, efficiency, student achievement, competitive position, and equity across the district. The benefits we expect are reduction of more than 2,300 empty seats, first-year savings of up to 9 million, programs located near the majority of students served, and improved transportation efficiency. For the Creekview feeder pattern, the recommendation is to consolidate Ferno Elementary. This is projected to improve elementary utilization in this feeder pattern to 82%. This is the oldest elementary facility in the feeder pattern at 55 years. It has small classrooms that are difficult to secure, presenting safety and security concerns. As we saw on the maps earlier, this feeder has the highest density of elementaries, and we believe that we will be able to maintain a neighborhood feel despite consolidation. And it will allow us to invest more in every student. For the Smith feeder, the recommendation is to consolidate McCoy Elementary. The recommendation is only regarding the facility at McCoy. The LEAP program will continue intact and is proposed to be located at Landry going forward. This is projected to improve efficiency, excuse me, utilization in this feeder pattern to 86%. This is the oldest elementary facility in the feeder pattern without a major renovation at 48 years. Small classrooms that are difficult to secure present safety and security concerns here. And as we saw on the maps earlier, this feeder has a very high density of elementaries. And we believe we will be able to maintain a neighborhood feel despite consolidation. For the Turner feeder pattern, the recommendation is to consolidate Central Elementary. This is projected to improve elementary utilization in the feeder pattern to 81, excuse me, 81%. This is the oldest elementary facility in the feeder pattern at 61 years. As we saw on the maps earlier, this feeder has a very high density of elementaries, and we believe we will be able to maintain a neighborhood feel despite consolidation. This will also allow for long-term improvements at Turner High School. For middle schools, the recommendation is to consolidate Long. This is projected to improve utilization in this feeder pattern to, across middle schools, to 79%. This is the oldest middle school without a major renovation at 46 years. And it will allow us to invest more in every student. You might be wondering, what is the plan for the consolidated campuses? For the Ferno Elementary School location, the planned alternative use is a possible future pre-K center. For the McCoy Elementary School location, the planned alternative use is a possible sale. For the Central Elementary School campus, the planned alternative use is temporary classrooms for campuses under construction. And for the Long Middle School, the planned alternative use is temporary classrooms for campuses under construction. New attendance zone recommendations. A few things to remember. Consolidation recommendations require us to consider new attendance zones. We want to balance our utilization so we can balance our investment in every student. New attendance zones have not been considered for over 20 years. Our neighborhoods have changed a great deal in that time, and we want to optimize our transportation. Here are the proposed elementary attendance zones. A few highlights. Ferno students would attend Thompson or Davis. McCoy students would attend Good, Blanton, or Carrollton. As noted previously, the LEAP program will continue intact and is proposed to be located at Landry going forward. This will allow the majority of students in the program to be closer to home. Central students would attend Carrollton or McLaughlin-Strickland. The boundaries of the surrounding attendance zones will need to be pushed and pulled somewhat as well to accommodate the changes. And again, the goal is to balance utilization so we can balance our investment in every student. All but two attendance zones, Kent and McWhorter, have proposed changes. Here are the proposed middle school attendance zones. Long Middle School students would attend Belalack or Polk. And again, the boundaries of the surrounding attendance zones will need to be pushed and pulled somewhat as well to accommodate the changes. And here are the proposed changes at the high school level. Creekview Zone got just a bit bigger, and Smith's Zone would include a small area south of Beltline. Now, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening, Superintendent Eldridge, President Shackman, and members of the board. In the very short period of time that I've been here, in less than approximately five months, I can see the compassion and the emotion that this is bringing to everybody. And I just want to stand here on behalf of the Human Resources Department to reassure you and all the staff impacted by this consolidation that they will have a position in CFB. I also want to take a few moments to go over a very brief overview of the relocation process. After this evening, presenting the recommendations, tomorrow morning, we are going to start early and visiting our campuses impacted by the consolidations to share information about the reassignment process. After the March 7th board meeting, when you all make the final decision, the HR team will issue a survey to, to the impacted employees to gather their input and preferences on some of the preferred colleagues and teammates that they would want to stick, stay with, interest in specific positions, as well as some top campuses, their top three choices of where they would like to be sent. HR will review the survey results and prioritize staffing relocating with programs or designated student groups. We will work hard to keep as many teachers as we can together with teammates and with groups of our students. Assignments will also consider staff preferences alongside programs being moved, certification requirements, rezoning needs, and district priorities. Ultimately, our goal is to ensure by May 1st, all staff will be notified of their new assignments. We are committed to transparency and ensuring a smooth transition for all staff impacted by this change. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lance Hamlin.
Dr. Eldridge, Mr. Shackman, members of the board. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to assure our community that the registration and transfer processes and procedures will be more efficient than ever during this process. As you can see, it is our goal to notify every family that will be impacted by the attendance zone changes by three different ways. You will receive a personalized letter, a parent's square message, as well as a welcoming message from the principal from the newly assigned campus. On March 24th, two things will happen. We will have our program application window open, like it does every year. These programs apply to our pre-K programs, our two-way dual-language program, and our STEAM GT Academy. We will also open our campus transfer windows, as well as what we're really excited about, again, is our early registration window that will open on April the 1st. And as you remember, last year, we had our most successful early registration window in the history of CFB. We had over 12,000 students register before summer. We encourage you, we encourage you to register early. Start on April the 1st, please. We would also like to inform you of our community, I'm sorry, inform our community about our family information sessions that are scheduled here next week. You can see, these information sessions are geared towards these following communities. The Long Middle School community, you'll have an opportunity on February the 10th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. to have your session at Creekview High School in the auditorium. The McCoy Elementary community will have an opportunity on February 13th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Newman-Smith High School in the auditorium. The Central Elementary community will have an opportunity on February the 18th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Turner High School Auditorium. And then our Ferno Elementary community will be able to have their opportunity on February the 20th, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Creekview High School Auditorium. At this time, I would like to hand the presentation over to Dr. Eldridge for our closing.
Tonight, these recommendations have been presented. The official board vote will be on March 6th. I know this is a tough decision for our school board, but I have no doubt that they will make the best decision for our students in their future. I want to thank everyone that has been involved in this process. We would not be able to get through this difficult and challenging time without the strength, passion, love, and support of our CFB family. Challenges are very hard. This has been very hard and challenging for all of us, but it also will bring new beginnings for all of our students. So I thank you all for the presentation tonight. Mr. Shackman?
I would add my thanks as well. And my thanks to the district partners, PASA and Walpart, and those who have provided excellent professional counsel to us to consider in this process. As a McCoy alumni parent, it's a hard decision, but these all are decisions that are to benefit our students going forward. We want the best for all. Board members, are there any questions that you have?
Regarding the presentation?
Yeah.
I would like to start by clarifying. For the TAPER report, the academic rate is better, increased performance. All campuses have met safety and security in trained personnel. Saying that, every one of these campuses that are listed for consolidation have met those requirements, and it's mentioned here.
That was not, that was not a primary factor in this evaluation. Space utilization, cost, a whole number. And they pointed out all the different factors that were involved in that. And then these are the recommendations. They are simply, at this point, recommendations. And they have been given to us as a board to study with extensive background material. And we will be studying it over the next month prior to the vote to approve or to move forward with this process at the next meeting. No doubt, we could probably make an argument for every campus that's out there, but the district will be underwater and bankrupt in, in years forward unless we do something this year. And as a board member, I don't want to leave my legacy at CFB failure.
Can I ask another question? Or would you not, you don't want to discuss it?
Well, it's for discussion, yes, would.
Well, I know that the proposed savings is $9 million, but the campuses are all going to be utilized for something else, and we're keeping all of our staff. So I want to better understand the savings. Now, I know that y'all, that it has been mentioned that it will be used for overflow and for construction purposes. And I'm sure those are all bond construction items. So is there income from the bond to utilize our facilities since they are going to possibly be closed?
Ms. Benavides, I think Mr. Blackburn can address that as far as utilizing our campuses for construction. For example, at RL Turner, do you want to address that, Mr. Blackburn, about portables and, and swing space?
Yes, I can speak to that. For example, at RL Turner, if we were not to use a For example, at RL Turner, if we were not to use a facility that we're repurposing, we would have to spend the money on portables. And RL Turner in particular, that would be between $2.5 to $3 million. We would have to build a new fire lane, a permanent fire lane, we'd have to move a fire hydrant, and the parking situation at RL Turner is already requiring a waiver from the city, and if there's ever an event, it's really a challenge. So that should enable us to save, to basically to invest more of our bond dollars towards building the building that will benefit the students instead of having to pay for temporary portables. So that's the savings as far as not having to use portables.
So then bond funds would be used to rent these facilities so that we don't have that expense? Because if we're trying to cut costs, using them still creates cost or expense for us?
We would not be renting, there are some campuses where we'll end up having to get portables, but this lowers the number of campuses where we'll have to spend the money on portables. But it's just an expense that's sometimes unavoidable, but in this case, it appears that we might be able to avoid spending that money in a couple of campuses.
Are there board members' questions? It's a hard decision, something we've got to positively approach and make the best of as we go forward because it's about our kids. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn, Dr. Smalkis, Dr. who else? Lance and Dr. Hamlin for your presentation. We appreciate it. I'm going to recommend that we take a five-minute recess and break. There may be some that wish to use this opportunity to leave the meeting, that's fine, but we'll be back in five minutes and start on our audience for guests.[732.61]
I'm going to call us back into session. Okay. We are back in session at 8:18 PM. The next item on our agenda for tonight is Audience for Guests. Let me go over a few of the board operating procedures for Audience for Guests. I remind everyone, if you're interested in speaking, you've already signed up for doing that and submitted a form. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during Audience for Guests. Speakers designated as stakeholders will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak to the Board, according to Board Policy BED Local. Because the Board wants to hear from as many of you as possible while keeping the meeting running efficiently, groups of five or more people who wish to present a particular viewpoints should appoint one person to speak on behalf of their group. Please remember that the Board is not by state law allowed to respond. Sometimes that gets confusing, but it is the rules not of our doing, but rules we must live by, that we are not allowed to respond to individuals in Audience for Guests. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil or courteous, I know you will. We ask that no one make personal attacks and that you not discuss students that are not your own child. In the event that the presiding officer, that's me, constitutes that there is a complaint or a charge against an employee or an officer during this time, I will ask that you stop and we will direct you to the appropriate grievance process for that. In compliance with the Opens Meeting Act, please note again, we will not respond publicly to items that are not on this agenda. The timer will show up on the screen and when you start to speak, the three minutes will begin. Our first speaker tonight is, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Prada Vermette.
Good evening, committee members. My name is Krish and I am a third grader at McCoy. I love my school. Before the sun even rises, it's dark and cold outside, but I wake up excited to go there. My sister, who is in high school now, also went there and I was so happy when my chance came. I love my classmates. I've known them for a good part of my life. After my house, this is where I've spent most of my life, learning, growing, and making friends who feel like family. We play games together at recess and I feel happy because everyone is included and there are no bullies here. I feel safe. My teachers make learning so much fun. They inspire me to do things like reflections, art contests, and World Cup challenges. I also ran for student council this year. Since McCoy is small, I know all the teachers, not just those in my grade. This gives me something to look forward to as I move up each year. One time, I painted a picture of a rocket ship and my teacher said it was out of this world. That made me feel really proud. I love McCoy and especially LEAP as it's my favorite part because it's a place where I can be myself and explore new things and dream big. Thank you for listening and for helping us keep McCoy the magical place it is.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Diana Farrar.
Thank you. I'd like to give you my appreciation for the moment to speak, Superintendent and the Board. I came tonight to advocate for the school I've called home for more than 35 years, Rosemead Elementary. I am grateful that I don't have to give this whole long, I had it down to exactly three minutes, speech, but Rosemead, like so many of the other schools in our district, is so special. It's the dedicated staff working with caring parents that make it all, make it what it is. And I want to thank you, such deep appreciation for the long, arduous process, painful process, that you have all gone through so far and that you will continue in the next month. I know moving forward, our focus should be on the state and let's all talk to our reps and our senators and our governor, but I know in the meantime that that dedicated Rosemead staff will embrace any and all students that come through its doors. And I do thank you for being such wonderful custodians for our community. This is a very difficult process and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ashara Amand.
Good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the LEAP parents at McCoy. I'm a resident of the neighborhood zoned for McCoy, as well as the mother of two beautiful McCoy cowboys, Mira, who's an eighth grader, and Leo in his fifth grade year at McCoy. That makes this my ninth year as a McCoy parent. I am here representing three generations of LEAP families spanning over 50 years, grandparents who are LEAP teachers, as well as former LEAPers who now have children of their own in the program. Among us are those who purchased homes just to be closer to the LEAP campus and those who wish to send their kids one day. We have recent graduates that go on to attend top institutions in the Ivy Leagues and young professionals who have launched their careers in fields like science and engineering. We would like to underscore that we are the living and breathing human data that demonstrate the power and promise of the LEAP program, and I think you know we represent CFB ISD well. With that said, we would also offer, as parents of LEAPers, as well as Gen Ed students, what your data may not be able to convey. We believe McCoy is uniquely capable of blending our LEAP kids and our Gen Ed kids in a way that I don't think could work on another campus. We are all one school and segregation truly is minimal. You may be able to move our program, but can you assure us that our kids will be able to learn and grow from each other anywhere else? While we value the education they are receiving from our outstanding teachers, their friendships and interactions with kids from diverse backgrounds and abilities are also our utmost concern. As you know, many districts, including LISD, McKinney ISD, Capel ISD, and others, are diverting resources to entice out-of-district transfers to make up for low enrollment. Without the unique environment provided at McCoy where the top 1% of CFB ISD learners attend elementary school, many LEAP parents have already expressed that they are considering other closer campuses. For many of us, it truly is this special program at this special campus or nothing. We will explore options, including other school districts. The LEAP Parent Group Chat has already expressed major concerns over Landry's TAPER scores, teacher turnover rate, and several have already stated they will not be continuing with LEAP if it's at Landry. The concerns are multifaceted and grave for the program. Landry is too far south for many programs and you are abandoning many students to other ISDs. You are sending kids from a nine-out-of-ten school to a five-out-of-ten school, which is unacceptable to the LEAP parents. I could go on because there are many concerns, but the overall message from the most involved, highest-performing group of elementary kids in this district is that this is unacceptable and we know our choices are many. Thank you.
I would ask that we try to keep the process moving forward and with all the cheering and clapping, I understand the emotion, but if we could slow that down just a bit, it will make this process go a little more efficiently. Brady Barnett is the next speaker.
Thank you, Board. President Shackman, as a parent of a first-grade student at McCoy Elementary and a property owner, deeply committed to the well-being of our community, the primary reason we bought here was McCoy Elementary. It is the number-one draw, protecting our property value, safeguarding the high-ranking and performing schools within our district is crucial for the growth and prosperity of our community and local economy. We must prioritize the top-rated schools. The inventory of single-family homes in DFW area is at highest level in years. If enrollment numbers are a concern, then this is an opportunity for our district to differentiate itself and attract young families to the area. When considering purchasing a home, the quality of local schools is a draw and insurance on investment, leading to increased property values, enrollment, and positive impact on the neighborhood's desirability. However, the consolidation and closure of highly-rated schools can have substantial effects on residential property values resulting in a decline in property values and changes in the overall appeal of the neighborhood. Decreased home buyer demand, school quality is a major factor in home purchases, families will look elsewhere when highly-rated schools close, families reconsider moving into the area, families in the area will move out of the area. Lower property value students show homes in, studies show that homes in top-rated districts command higher prices, some 10% to 20%. Anyone that's had their home on the market recently knows this. In DFW, it's a tough market right now and it's going to kill the property values. Neighborhood stability and appeal will take a strong negative effect, it will force homeowners to relocate, my family being one of them. We are zoned for McCoy, we're proud to be zoned for McCoy. This will force us out. There will be a strong shift in socioeconomic demographics, tax revenue, and public services. I believe the Walpert data is lazy, misleading, inaccurate, without actionable future. The Advisory Board is by design to disassociate Walpert from the controversial decision. The reason to engage Walpert needs to be reviewed and investigated. The final takeaway here, review the data from Walpert and look into what the public sees on Zillow, on every real estate app out there, data from great schools and from niche. McCoy is a top-three in the district. You must mitigate the impact or postpone the consolidation plan until proper evaluations by reputable consultants in a transparent manner. The proposed plan fails to do this, please protect McCoy Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Our next speaker is Aria Dean.
Good evening. You know, last month I spoke to the Board as a concerned parent, citizen, and staff member of CFB, and I am still concerned, though that is not why I'm here today. And I wanted to be known to everyone that this speech that I'm about to make was a speech that I was going to make regardless of the outcome of the schools that were named for consolidation. I was at the point in my grief state of acceptance, that if my school was closing, my school was closing. This is what we have to do. And so, you know, I'm here right now, and I've had strangers already tell me, like, "Are you okay?" Because I'm crying, you know? And I'm crying because I'm feeling everybody's feels here right now. This is not fun. You guys aren't having fun, we're not having fun, none of us are enjoying this experience, right? And so I'm here to share my support to all of our school communities and to remind all of us here in this room that none of our schools deserve to be shuttered, not a single one. And our district was forced to make this decision, and we must trust that this decision was made in our best interest and in our children's best interest. So yeah, we need to be angry, all of us need to be angry, but we don't need to be angry at the Board, we don't need to be angry at the district. But we need to be angry and upset about what brought us here today. And we need to take that anger and we need to put it to use. And the place for us to put it is what brought us here, and that is our state's refusal to adequately fund education and public education for all of us and for all of our children. And so this is time for us, every single one of our communities, to come together to be one big family. Am I right? I'm right, and I'm sorry. I hate, hate, hate the idea of anybody's school closing. It is not fair, is not fair to any one of us that this is happening. But even though it's happening, the one thing that we can control is how we love each other. And so I am here for Fano, I'm here for McCoy, I'm here for Central, I'm here for Long, I'm here for everyone, and I hope that the rest of you join me in being one big family for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Ms. Kim Crossley.
Hi there. As a resident of Carrollton, I find myself facing the real possibility that the actions of the Board of Trustees is causing Carrollton to lose our high-earning residents. To provide more details to the beautiful geography lesson we got earlier today, many of the elementary schools in Carrollton are located in well-established neighborhoods. It's the heavily-involved and higher-earning taxpayers that are at risk of leaving the district for better education opportunities. I believe it is the placement of schools in neighborhoods that has been key to attracting outstanding citizens. I want to acknowledge our trustees and the challenges you presented to us today. And I would like the trustees to recognize the challenges they place on taxpayers. For example, we recently voted on a bond for $700 million and a portion of the funds was dedicated to the special ed program for Rosemead Elementary. Will the district remove the SPED program from Rosemead? It is these kinds of actions that have people questioning the planning, the budgeting of the trustees and which group of children will be relocated next. I hear the trustees when they say, "There is a deficit," and one of the reasons is low student enrollment. But after implementing the consolidation, what are the trustees doing to retain and attract new students to get the budget you need? I don't think closing schools is sending the correct message. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Leighton Gamble.
President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the Board. My name is Leighton Gamble, y'all know me. This is my son Noah Gamble, he's a fifth grader at McCoy. Brock Gamble, you scoot up. He's a first grader at McCoy, this is my husband, Nick Gamble, and we have the teachers, if y'all could stand and stop. When thinking about the right words to say to you to describe what makes McCoy different than the other schools being considered for closure, everything kept coming up, Jeff Shagru. Jeff Shagru has been a constant at McCoy Elementary since 2009, that's 15 years. He alone brought peace to my frazzled mind as the ard for my son brought nothing but fear and anxiety. The simple words of "all things considered, Mrs. Gamble, this is just third grade, Noah is a great kid, and he is going to be just fine," was exactly what my mom heart needed to hear in that moment and has brought peace that has resonated with me ever since. Throughout that year, Jeff Shagru instilled the love of not only learning, but statistics, problem-solving, and Star Wars in Noah. Our lives have been forever changed by him, but here is where the magic lies. He is not the only one that has been constant. Mina Shagru and Tiffany Joel, both at McCoy Elementary, 20 years. Mrs. Green, 13 years. Ms. Talbot, nine years. Ms. Johns and Ms. Kaywood, 17 years. Mrs. Cannon, 10 years. Mrs. Aznavour, 23 years. Mrs. Petrie, 15 years. Ms. Wheatley, 21 years. Coach Sharp, 20 years. That is at least one teacher from each grade and specials representing tenure. But it doesn't end there. Mrs. Walker, 19 years, and Mrs. Hatcher, 38 years. These are teachers that spent their careers at McCoy and have chosen to spend their retirement subbing for our students on a regular basis, both in positions of long-term subs this year, but it doesn't end there. Mrs. Chamberlain, 18 years. Mrs. Kidd, 18 years. Mrs. Harrison, 16 years. Mr. Williams, 21 years. It was Mr. Williams' silent service during COVID that lit a fire in my heart for the appreciation of every unseen sacrifice that the staff standing and sitting before me makes. There are a million more things that I could say that make these teachers special, but their continued commitment to our school stands above the rest. Families change, students leave, but these teachers and staff remain. You cannot recreate this magic anywhere else, and that is why McCoy deserves to stay, so that the future of this community can experience the magic of being a McCoy cowboy. Thank you, and...
Thank you, Ms. Kim. This Board faces challenging decisions. We appreciate the input from those of you from our community and from various schools. The next item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda, and we will proceed to that. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items, and the Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, the Board may request withdrawal of items for clarification or discussion. Board members, is there anything that you wish to remove from the Consent Agenda prior to a vote? We'll give them just a minute for folks to get out of the way. Again, thank you to parents and all for your attendance tonight. Again, we'll go back to our Consent Agenda item. Is there anything that any of the Board members, any items that you wish to remove? I see none. Is there a recommendation on a motion? Ms. Hatfield.
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Hatfield, is there a second? Second from Mrs. Brady, any discussion, Board members? Hearing none and seeing none, I will ask for a vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Okay, all right, so did you get that? All right. So we have approved and passed the Consent Agenda. Item six on our agenda is Items for Discussion or Action. There were no items removed from the Consent Agenda, so we'll skip past 6A and we'll go to 6B. It is regarding the upcoming general election and the adoption of an order for the election. This item is marked for approval, for discussion, and we will go forward. Is there a motion for this item? Ms. Hatfield.
I move that we approve the matters related to the May 3, 2025, general trustee election, including the adoption of an election order.
Thank you. Is there a second? Yes, Marjorie, thank you. Board members, is there any discussion? If not, seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, no opposed. Let the record show that item 6B has been adopted, a general election order. Number seven on our agenda is, are there any comments from Board members regarding posted agenda for tonight? No. Okay. It's been an interesting evening, and I suspect next month's meeting will also be interesting when the vote is taking place. Thank you for your presence and your attendance, and we have reached the end of our agenda, and I am calling our meeting concluded at 8:43 PM.